Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular City of White Lakes Council meeting. Monday, January 11th, 2021 at 6:30. Welcome to a new year. Roll call, please.
Mayor Reland.
Here.
Councilor Zins.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
To approve the following items from the consent agenda. Item three, approval of city council minutes of December 28th, 2020. Item seven, correspondence, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency final NPDES/SDS permit dated January 1st, 2021. Flight officer, December 2020 report, Mississauga Tribune, Hometown Focus, 2021 official newspaper proposals, and IRS standard mileage rates for 2021. Item eight D, old business, a reminder on January 13th, 2021, there's a special city council meeting electronically with East Range Joint Powers Board at 4:00 PM, and then 10 claims, payroll, and receipts.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any issues with consent agenda? If not, motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Motion by Councilor Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Councilor Pop. Roll call, please.
Councilor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Reland.
Yes, motion carries. Guest citizens forum, Tammy, anybody request to be on tonight?
Oh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I imagine Matt and Ryan, you've got stuff farther down on the agenda. We'll move down to reports from staff, recreation, golf arena supervisor Wade West.
Um, reading back over now, we had a little hiccup there when we started up. We ended up with another leak up on the roof and denser. And I had to have commercial refrigeration come in and repair that and add more free on to the system. Should all be covered by insurance. All the paperwork and stuff, I got filed today. So we're just waiting to hear back from the League of Minnesota Cities on that. Otherwise, yeah, arena's back open. Everybody's happy.
Wade, Wade, when are they going to start games?
Um, games start the 14th.
High school, too?
Yes, high school games start the 14th. We don't have a high school game until the 28th of January.
Okay.
Otherwise, youth games start on, there's one on Thursday night, and then there's a couple on the weekend also.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody got any questions for Wade? Library director Sue Sellers.
Hi, our remote lockers are now up and functioning. And thanks to the CARES Act funding that we were able to purchase those. So if there's anything anybody would like to pick up from the library, either while we're open, if they prefer that method, a curbside method, or anytime we're closed, just give us a call and we can put them in a locker. You scan your barcode of your library card or punch in a four-digit number that we provide to you. So we've had some people using them and it works very well. So we're pretty pleased with that. Our winter reading program for adults began last Monday, and as of today, we have about 50 people signed up already. So we have a great start. For every four books and/or 20 miles you walk, snowshoe or ski, you turn in a card to go into the drawing. With their first card you turn in, you receive a free travel mug and some treats. Part of our reading program, we are traveling down the Mississippi River. So for each square that you check off on your card, you go to a new city on your way to New Orleans. And we thought this year would be fun since we're heading towards New Orleans, that we would celebrate Marty Grob, which is the week of February 15th. We're going to participate, have a silent auction that week to raise money for summer reading. And then also, we are hoping to do Marty Grob Fat Tuesday Parade that Tuesday evening on the 16th. So we're working on details for that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Pretty similar to what they.
And ski, cross-country skiing's cheating, too, Dan, by the way.
Oh, no, 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 no. I got over, probably got 60-plus miles on the skiing part. All right.
All right, moving on. Public Works supervisor Kenny Snattinger.
Well, yeah, today we were informed that we have our first main break of the year. It's actually on the 200 block of Wyandotte within the scope of our road project, which is good and bad. You know, the fact that we're digging up brand-new blacktop. However, it's a good thing since we didn't get the final lift of blacktop on, that once we get the patch done, it'll be blacktopped over, you know, so the patch will never show. So we're, we got everything routed into the storm drain, called in valves on everything like that. We're ready to dig in the morning. We'll take care of that. City Hall project is, for the most part, wrapped up. Jamie from Frontier is still finishing up the phone system, which wasn't necessarily part of the project. But that's why there's still some things scattered around in City Hall for the work he's doing up there. And then Northern Business Products has to come back yet and finish a couple pieces of countertop for the desk area by Tammy and Betsy. Other things we've been doing down here at the shop in between snowfalls, we have the dock from the Colby Landing down here, which is about a 20-year-old dock that we're completely rebuilding top to bottom, all-new decking on it. And the bolt bumper, etc., around the whole outside of it. So that's just about done. We should be hauling it back down there in about a week. We've hauled some snow from around the area businesses and that, just in pushing banks, making more room. And next week sometime, we'll have to start taking Christmas deckles down. That's about it.
Any questions for Kenny? All right, moving on. Public Utilities Supervisor Jake Burn.
All right, well, Kenny already touched on the water main break. We're all set up for that. We have a curb stop to be dug up on 230 Wyandotte. Needs to be repaired. Public Works has already set up to help us with that. We're going to do that this week, but then the water main break popped in. Got our new permit in, so looked over that. Everything looks good there from the MPCA, but we already approved that. BioSalads report was turned in, submitted to the MPCA that was prepared by Montane Environmental. So that's taken care of. Our mixer on our primary digester went down. We drained oil out of the gearbox, looked into it. Looks like a bearing went out in there. So we're looking into getting that replaced. I'll be making some calls this week on that. Heaters in the basement to the water plant just went down today. Called Carlson Duluth to come look at that. Looks like a bad switch on both of them. So we'll be looking into that further. This will be the second time we've replaced those switches, to my memory. But I want to find a fix that we don't have to do every year, you know? And then McCarthy Wells showed up last week. They inspected our three Influent pumps and our three high-service pumps, just checking temperatures on the bearings, making sure the amps and the voltage is all in the right spot. So got the reports for that. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, Jake. Anything for Jake? Anybody? All right, move down to ambulance director Melanie Olmstead.
So. Um, I emailed everyone or the council members our 2020 ambulance report. Our runs were up 13% from last year for a total of 953 runs for the year. Um, we're steadily staying busy. We have two rigs down in Duluth right now. Um. Working on training. Hopefully, we get to start training in person here pretty soon. Everyone's getting a little tired of Zoom training. We're doing Zoom this month for CPR. Then everyone has to make appointments to come down and test out for their hands-on portion of it. Other than that, we're just plugging along. I have Cody working on an AFG grant to try to get some money for our new ambulance that we ordered. And I've got email last week that I received $25,000 more dollars from the Minnesota Department of Health in grant monies. I haven't got the award letter yet, so I'm not sure what areas I can spend that in, and it has to be spent by February 1st, so that should be fun. Um, I have my final, or one of the final reports to do for that. Other than that, not much.
Okay, any, any questions for Mel? All right, Fire Chief Tony House.
I don't have a whole lot. 2020 was our slowest year on record for fires, which is a good thing. We had 17 fire calls. Three of them were mutual aid structure fires, two in Aurora, one in Virginia. Three vehicle fires in White Lakes, three structure fires in White Lakes, two vehicle accidents, two wildland, um, three gas calls, CO, and one general fire alarm. So 17 fire calls is the lowest in the eight years I've been chief. So that's, that's a good thing. And pretty much the same as Mel, the ambulances keep us busy. So we, uh, hopefully can start training in person.
Okay, anything for Tony? Anything else? All right, thank you. City Attorney Mitch Brunfeld, anything for now, Mitch?
Amir in council, I'll just, I'll address that one agenda item that I saw. On item C was the question about the modification to the blight ordinance to add boats and campers. And I think the question was whether there needed to be some separate authorization from the council to go ahead and make that revision. My understanding of when that came up at a prior meeting was it was the, it was the consensus of the city council to go ahead and make that change, or to bring a proposed revised ordinance forward to include boats and campers in the definition of vehicles under section 91.02. So I just wanted to give the council an update on that. I am working on that. I'm working on the drafting of that. I haven't completed it yet. I probably will have it done by the end of this week, as far as the proposed revision. And then we'll have it on the next meeting agenda for the council to consider that amendment to the code. But other than that, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to reports from city councils. Councilors Zins.
But the only thing I've got is we do have an interview for an EMT tomorrow night. So, young lady who sounds very eager to get on the department, according to Mel, so that's a good thing.
All right, yeah, I forgot all about that. I got a busy day tomorrow.
I figured you did, so I just thought I'd mention it. So that's about it.
Okay, Councilor Pop.
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor, other than agenda items.
Okay, Councilor Peterson.
Um, so at the chamber meeting, they said that they're dedicating the buck to the workers of like the EMS buildings. So they're not going to move it, but they're going to put some type of plaque there in dedication to them. So I just thought I'd let everyone know that. I didn't know if anyone heard that.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Chris. And Councilor Kramer's not on. Tammy, she hasn't tried to get on?
No.
Okay, I'll find out what happened there. So I got a couple issues. The East Range Joint Powers Board, we, we met last week, and the East Range Joint Powers county grant is for $113,000 for the latest core CARES funding. And we've all agreed that we're going to revisit the grant program for local businesses. So we're waiting to hear back from the county to make sure we get that 113,000. They're setting up another application deadline. It'll be 100% grant to try to help out our cities. So, or excuse me, our businesses. So that's, that's a good thing. Hopefully, that works out. And then I just want everybody to, everybody, the public, that the utility bills, there's a couple ways to get your bills paid. The United Way's got a program, and I know it's, it's been on the sign, and it's been out with utility bills, and the state has also got a program to pay overdue utility bills. I know we've got, I don't know, 45, 50 of them that are well overdue. And I just want the public to understand that there are grant monies out there to help you with that. So I'm hoping a lot more citizens this month take advantage of that. So. And I was going to welcome Councilor Deb Kramer, but we'll, we'll do that next time. And that's all I have. I'm going to Old Business 8 COVID-19. Governor's executive order, I don't know, Tammy, if you've got anything on that. I think everybody's pretty well read that. Maybe he's got any questions on that, the way we're sitting? I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Opening city buildings, I think that's the next item on there. I talked to Tammy and Betsy today. They were looking at opening City Hall Monday, but next Wednesday, the phone company is supposed to be in to finish the phones and get, get everything back together there. So I think, Tammy, I think we're going to wait a little bit yet, until we do that?
Yeah, yeah, we still have a little bit of chaos in here, so that would be nice to wait just a little bit longer.
Okay, and then I don't think any other buildings. I think the only one other that's closed right now is the community building. And I, and I personally don't see any reason to move forward opening at this time. Any other council, have any comments on that?
Becky did want me to let you know that she is working on an addendum, if we need it for the community building when we do start using it. So she is in the process of trying to come up with some COVID-19 language for the future.
Okay. But I think for tonight, I don't see any reason moving forward right now, so. And then the planning commission, are, is, they are going to resume their monthly meetings at City Hall, Dave? Is that correct?
Um, it really hasn't been decided, to my knowledge.
I mean, what, what's your thought, Dave? Do you want to do that, or do you want to keep them on Zoom yet?
I think we should remain on Zoom. I mean, for the time being, I think it would be smart to.
Okay. I don't have any issue with that. We got a meeting in two weeks, so we can, we can readdress that if things start looking better, so.
Right.
Betsy said that we do have some problems with a few of the members not being able to Zoom. Two or three, or two? Two can't seem to Zoom.
We can probably, obviously, there's probably enough room that we can do a meeting down there and still keep our distance. You know, I think it's a little easier to do a planning and zoning because they're not televised. So you're not muffled with a face mask trying to talk during a meeting, but. So I guess I don't have any problem with that.
How many people do you normally have come to it, Dave?
Very seldom do we have, unless there's a issue on, if somebody wants a variance or something, obviously, then you get a couple people. But unless we have a public hearing for one reason or another, it's just the board usually.
Okay. Well, you make that decision if you, you know, if you need to do that, you know?
Yeah, we can, we can do it. I'll, I'll get hold of Betsy and I'll work something out.
Okay. All right, and then the next item on the agenda is the city council meetings. I, I personally think we should stay at Zoom for a while yet, until things lighten up. And I know Councilor Pop agrees with me on this one. Is everybody okay? We keep them, keep them going Zoom, Zoom for, for a while yet?
I would prefer to.
Okay.
Also.
Okay, well, the second round of shots started today. By the end of the week here, most of the healthcare providers and, and staff should have their second shot. And I know our ambulance crew, Mel, when are you guys up for your second shot?
I think starting this week, our first rounds were due for their second shots. Tony, did you have yours today or tomorrow?
Tomorrow is mine, but there is a group that went today.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and then I think I was like last, and I'm not due for a couple more weeks here.
Okay. Dan, are you getting yours tomorrow, too?
I have not heard anything yet, so I missed out on the first day they gave them. So I think, I guess, I have, I, all I can say is I have not gotten contacted by.
Okay.
Amanda, Amanda Baker, Dan will be texting you. She has your number from communications from the last time. So she'll be contacting you. If you don't hear from her soon, let me, let me know. Were you that first week?
Yeah, I think the first shots were given on a Thursday, and I was out of town or whatever. And then, then I had mine the following Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, so maybe next week for you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll keep the council meetings at Zoom for now. And then St. Louis County email, the COVID-19 vaccine clinic. I have not heard anything else on that. I don't know if, if anybody else has. Tammy, you haven't got any new updates on that?
No, not since that email last week, was it from her?
Okay, yeah, I think we're just going to kind of have to play that by year. And, and staff, you'll just have to be ready if something comes up, so. Anybody else have anything else on, on COVID or anything? Anybody else have anything else on, on COVID or anything? Okay, moving on to, uh, Old Business Eight B Benchmark Engineering. Um, I, I noticed on my walks, all those lots are, uh, have been surveyed uh, behind leads, those twenty-five lots, but, uh, Tammy, I don't believe we've gotten a bill or a final report from them yet.
No.
Okay, so I was just gonna, trying to keep everybody posted on that. We should be getting that pretty quick. As soon as we get the final report from Benchmark, I think we'll, we'll get a letter sent out to those homeowners on the front side there, so we can, we can move on that, so. Um, and then item C, modification to blight ordinance, Dan, I know Mitch mentioned it, uh, what, uh, what's your thought there?
I think he covered it perfectly. And he's moving in the direction that we, I had intended to go, so once he gets that drafted, then the council can approve it and we'll go forward. So I think we're right on, right on schedule there.
Okay. And then I'm hoping item D is, we talked about it on the, uh, on the consent agenda, just so we remember, four to six on Wednesday for that joint council meeting. Um, item E, approved purchase of Skidsteer. Um, and, uh, Hot Sea Model Pressure Washer, Kenny?
Yeah, so both of these were budgeted items. Uh, I had budgeted five thousand dollars apiece for these, uh, last summer when we did them. Um, the Skidsteer Auger with bits came in at forty-three hundred and eighty-six dollars. And the, uh, Hot Sea Pressure Washer came in at four thousand eighty-four dollars, which is also including their, um, the wheel kit and the hose reel, et cetera. It's like their deluxe package. Um, so it's, it's more mobile, we can use it outside, et cetera. So both of those items I had budgeted for, they both came in under budget, I guess, looking for, uh, the okay to move forward in purchasing them.
Any, anybody got any comments on it to Ken, for Kenny? If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve both.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Zins. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, Kenny, go ahead and order them up. Um, item E F, new hire Steve Peterson, combination specialist, Kenny?
Yeah, so, uh, we interviewed and made the, uh, offer to hire, uh, Steve Peterson for the um, heavy equipment operator position. Um, since the successful candidate has all necessary licensing and certifications, all employees here at Public Works are, um, you know, they, they can become a combo specialist if they um, hold a certain number of licenses and or certificates. Um, so when Steve was the successful candidate, actually both are um, top two people had the required certifications needed to be the combo specialist, which is um, like a dollar an hour higher in the pay scale. Um, he, he's eligible, I guess, to start at that wage. And I didn't know if there um, should be any discussion. I also feel that he um, in the union contract, it is stated that people, um, that the council can waive people's, uh, step program as far as the ninety percent starting pay. Um, and you know, that's at your discretion. My personal feeling is he's got enough experience and or life experience, which, um, you know, our last two hires maybe hadn't, that's why they started at the ninety percent. But in the past, uh, some other new hires have been slotted in at a higher starting wage. Um, so my recommendation would be to, to maybe waive one of the steps in his starting scale, but that's, uh, up for discussion, I guess, for you guys.
And then Kenny, you're talking about making him a combination specialist right away then, is that your comment?
Yeah, like I say, anybody, anybody that works here has the ability to be a combo specialist. Both Alex and Zach are another, are last two employees who were hired this past year. Um, they're both working on getting certifications and other things to make them eligible. So as soon as they complete that, um, they'll both be eligible to get that pay as well. So anybody who works here can get that. It's kind of, in my mind, an incentive to better yourself, if nothing else, and, uh, bring more to the city um, by getting different licenses and certificates. Um, Alex is working on uh, boiler license, for instance. Zach is working on getting one of the other licenses. And, you know, they'll both be eligible, but at this time they're not. Um, Steve has uh, enough of the licenses required by the city to make him a combo specialist, so. I mean, I think it, it's just automatically he qualifies. It's just a different title than heavy equipment operator, um, in the contract to be a combo specialist.
The council's thoughts?
Well, I feel like, as long as he has the requirements to meet the, uh, the combo specialist, I think, I think that's fine that we go ahead and do that, but I think that we need to stay consistent. I know we had a previous hire in, in the ambulance department that, uh, we didn't waive the steps on there. I think we should at least wait at least six months before we consider any, any sort of waiving of the, the step process and the wage. That's my feeling.
Okay. Any other comments? Not hearing any, I guess, Dan, will you make a motion to make him combination specialist? And, uh, before we waive any steps, we, we do a six-month, six-month revisit?
Yes, I'll make the motion to that effect.
Okay, is there support?
Okay. All support.
Uh, the motion was made by Counselor Pop and, uh, support was by Counselor Zins. Uh, so Kenny, we understand he'll go to combination specialist, he'll stay at the ninety percent for six months and we'll revisit.
Sounds good.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson would be refraining, I.
Stain, yes.
Okay, Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Go down to, uh, on item nine, new business, city reorganization. We have to vote on these, uh, by each number, so, uh, number one, to make the following position appointments relative to the twenty-twenty-one city reorganization. City Clerk Treasurer Becky Birch, Library Director Susan Sowers, Gulf Recreation Arena Supervisor, Assistant Weed Inspector Wade West, Public Works Supervisor Ken Snetsinger, Public Utilities Supervisor Jake Burnt, Electrical Inspector State of Minnesota, Animal Control Officer Jed Olmstead, Zoning Officer Matthew Royceff, Planning Commission Acting Secretary Betsy Karkinen, City Assessor, St. Louis County, City Attorney Colosmo Patchen and Carney, East, East Range Police Department Chief Tim Suler, Fire Department Officers Chief Anthony House, Assistant Chief Jeremy Damon, Three-Year Captain Kevin Ekman, Two-Year Captain Pete Wallner, One-Year Captain Nate Skelton, Secretary Treasurer Ann Breland, Ambulance Director Melanie Olmstead, Assistant Ambulance Director Cody Anson, Hoyt Lakes Economic Development Authority Chairman Chris Breland Commissioner, Chairman Chris Breland Commissioners, Dave Zins, Dan Pop, Christine Peterson and Deborah Kramer, EDA Clerk Becky Birch. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Uh, man, I would make that motion, but I think we should also, being that we now have a, a blight officer for a year and a half plus, I should she be listed in there also?
Sure. Uh, Tammy, would we add, uh, blight officer? Good catch, Dan. With that addition to that list, Dan, is that a motion?
Yes. That's the moment.
Motion by Counselor Pop, is there support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Zins, roll call.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. Item two, to approve the following official depositories of city funds. First National Bank of Gilbert, Hoyt Lakes Branch, Raymond and James and Associates. Motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Zin, support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Peterson, roll call?
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes. Motion carries. Item three, to designate the Musabi Daily News as the twenty-twenty-one official city newspaper. A motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Pop, roll call.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes. Motion carries. To approve the mayor's council liaison appointments relative to the twenty-twenty-one city reorganization as follows. I'm not gonna read them all, but everybody's seen them. Um, there's, there's quite a big list there, so. I get a motion to approve council liaisons.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Counselor Pop, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Peterson, roll call.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. Item five, to approve the regular city council meeting dates as the second and fourth Monday of each month at six-thirty. With the exception of June, July and August, during which the meetings will be held on the fourth Monday only at six-thirty. Is everybody okay with those days? We've been brought up in the past, we can always change, but everybody okay with, uh, the Monday, second and fourth?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Zins.
All support.
Support by Counselor Pop, roll call.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. And the last one, to approve the transfer of funds from the general fund to other funds is appropriate to cover deficits, interest allocations, cooperative ambulance share and approved budget items. Motion, please.
Make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Zins, roll call.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. Item moving on to item E.
Yes. Mayor, you, uh, skipped number six.
Did I really?
Okay.
Alright. To approve the meetings of the Economic Development Authority following the regular city council meetings on the second Monday of each month with the exception of June, July and August, during which would be the fourth Monday when needed. Motion, please.
I'll make lotion.
Motion by Counselors in, support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Pop, roll call?
Counselors, Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. Item B, approved contractor application for payment number seven dated December ninth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred to Musami Bituminus for the twenty-twenty street and infrastructure project. Matt?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, the, the payout that you have in front of you today is basically for the crushing that they did in the concrete pile at the, at the city site there. They finished that up last month and, uh, we missed the cutoff for the, the last meeting, so this is, this is, uh, coming through now. So it, it was that one item, so I can answer any questions if anybody's got any questions on it.
Any council have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve that payment.
Motion by Counselor Pop to approve that, support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Zins, roll call.
Counselors, Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. Item C, approved contractor application for payment number three dated December twenty-first, twenty-twenty in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred ninety dollars to Lency Enterprises Incorporated for the city hall improvement projects. Matt, you have this one too?
No, I wasn't thinking that might be Kenny.
Kenny?
Yeah, I guess, uh, this is just the final payout for the city hall. Um, we had done it in three phases. We got the first one done in time to, uh, get it paid for with the CARES Act money back in November. The second one was done in December and now this is the final for the, uh, city hall project, I believe.
Is there, are they holding anything back, you know?
Uh, boy, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And you're satisfied?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, they came back and, uh, touched up some things. Uh, a couple phone calls had to be made. They came back and, and did some things, and like I say, other than, uh, the office furniture situation, which I don't even think was part of the Lency portion of the project, so yeah, I think they're done.
Okay. Any council have any questions on that? Not hearing any, a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, is there support?
All support.
Support by Counselors Zins, roll call.
Counselors, Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland?
Yes, motion carries. Item D, to approve the contract application for payment number five dated December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and seventy dollars to grater construction for the Hoyt Lakes Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvement Project. Uh, Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, there was a update memo included with this in your packet that had a couple photos from the site. Um, we're continuing, uh, as it will, or it has in the past and will, passed and will continue pouring concrete and working on the tanks. Uh, they've also gotten large shipments of piping in and some of the underground piping moving towards the filter building. And so, uh, the pouring contact tank has been completed and now they're gonna move towards the remainder of the filter building. Uh, so this is payout five, and so far this would cover about nineteen percent of the contract through five months. So if you kinda prorate that out, we are looking at a, at a kind of a two-year process here as we get through the rest of the project, two and a half years, so. Uh, they continue to move along, um, kind of at the pace we expected, so any questions?
Uh, they, are they planning on working through the most of the winter, Brian?
Uh, as of right now, they are. They did, uh, they did shut down a little bit over, uh, over the holidays. There was a cold snap and some snow and, and they decided to pull off the site for a little bit. Um, but I think, uh, I think for the most part, they will continue to work. And so they are, um, we are out there checking to make sure they're maintaining, uh, proper conditions for cold weather concrete, and then also they have ground thaw on the areas that are there. They're continuing to construct, so I think unless we hit a snap where it's some real nasty weather, they'll, they'll be continuing on, so.
Okay, any concerns, Jake?
No concerns.
Okay. All right, could, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Pop, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Peterson, roll call.
Counselors, Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Reeland.
Yes, motion carries. Item E, review approved requested dated January sixth, twenty-twenty-one from the Haven Barn Grill for full refund of twenty-twenty liquor license fees. Tammy, is that the only one we've got?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the council?
Uh, yeah, I guess I would like to bring a couple things. I know we, we gave a full waived the fees for twenty-twenty-one. And I guess I'm a, I'm a hundred percent at helping the businesses, but I'm kinda taken aback that they asked for a full refund for twenty-twenty when they were fully closed for a hundred and twenty-nine days. They were open for seventy-five and fifty percent open for about half of the year, so. I would like to have them come up with a calculated payment. I think that's the reason that, that we changed the ordinance as we did to, to be able to adjust their fees. I mean, we, you know, if things go good with COVID and things open wide open, they're gonna have no license fees in twenty-twenty-one and maybe operate at fifty percent, but, and like I say, I think that it's great that the city can help that, but I, you know, to just come out and say that they're asking for a full refund, I, I don't agree with that.
Any other council discussion on that?
I guess I feel that even though they were open a good portion of the year, they were still at a reduced capacity. They weren't able to generate the income they normally would, so they were still at a loss. So I feel that we should, and I don't know, maybe I'm alone in this, I think that we should offer them a full refund for the year just to help them out. I mean, twelve hundred isn't really a lot.
Okay, anybody else, Dave, comments?
I would have to agree with Christine on this. Um. You know, I think these businesses have been hurting all year long. And uh. I don't think this is a lot of money. Um, when you start looking at their bottom line, what they're paying each week when they're down, how much they're losing, so. I'd be, I'd be okay with paying them. Given over full refund.
Okay, um, is there a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councillor Peterson?
All support.
Support by councillor Zins, roll call.
Councillor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Go on.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Reland.
Yes, motion carries. Give me, I I need a quick, I got a call coming in, I think from councillor Peterson, our councillor Kramer here. Hang on one sec. I think she might be having some video problems. Is Deb there? Who, whom, who's this? Chris who? Are we done with that one, Tammy?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Item F, discuss authorization, public work supervisors' application for Visa credit card five thousand. Kenny, is this from you?
Uh, yeah, actually Becky, I think submitted it or put it on the agenda. I was up there one day and discussed with her the possibility of getting a credit card. Um, I do occasionally use her credit card to order stuff, but um, there's been some instances where. There are certain businesses where they want you to bring the credit card in in person and her credit card has her name on it. So I'm not allowed to do that. One of them went take payment over the phone. We do have, you know, a a million places we do business with getting parts and supplies for building projects and whatnot that uh. You know, obviously we have charge accounts with some of those places that we don't do business with very often. If you don't use your account within a year, it goes dormant. And every time we go. Get a cart full of supplies, we get up to the counter and they say, here's a credit app, bring this back, give it to Betsy. You know, so th- there's times like that where we just thought a a credit card might resolve those issues. Um, it it would be once in a blue moon that we'd ever use it. Um, the other instance where we've, we've been using uh. For the last few weeks anyway, was getting some non-oxygenated gas from the holiday, the Lucky Seven here in Hoyt Lakes that where we do get our fuel from. Doesn't offer that. Uh, Palms used to when we were getting our gas there. Um, for small engines, especially stuff like at the fire hall that sit in storage for a long. Length of time, like the snowmobile and ATV at the fire hall, for instance. And all the the small engine equipment over there, we prefer to put non-oxygenated gas in. What we've been doing is we've been going to the holiday fill a five gallon can, paying for it out of our pocket, coming back to city hall, getting petty cash. It's just little times like that where I thought it'd be handy if I had a credit card here that we're able to get stuff from different places.
Okay, I don't have an issue with it at all. Is any, any other council?
No.
No, I see there's a five thousand dollar limit or line of credit on that. Are we still under the, anything over a thousand dollars has to be council approved?
Nope.
Yeah, and I I don't know i- if that was something from the bank, you know, Betsy had got, or excuse me, Becky had got the uh. Credit app from the bank here in town. To do this and I don't know that they were the ones that chose a five thousand dollar credit line. I. I certainly don't think it's necessary, so and anytime I do ever plan on making a purchase of over a thousand dollars, I get the. The approval I had in mind, so.
I don't have a problem with the five thousand, Kenny. I just wanted to know if we still have the thousand dollar. In place, make sure that, you know, if something is more than that, we're made aware of it.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay. We have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Motion by councillor Zins, is there support?
I'll support.
Uh, support by councillor Peterson, roll call.
Councillor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Reland.
Yes, motion carries. Item G, schedule a special city council meeting to discuss staffing. And other employment matters for the city clerk's office. Something's come up that I'd like to call a special meeting on. I don't believe it'll be more than ten or fifteen minutes. Um, I'm looking at Wednesday, we're meeting from four to six, if we could do it right after that meeting. I just felt that we're all. Going to be at a meeting anyway for another ten or fifteen minutes after that. Is, is that okay with that? And then. Tammy, do I need to have a three day notice is the only other issue? Mitch, are you on?
I am, and you do, you do have to have, yeah, you have to have a seventy two hour notice.
So if that's the case, could we do Thursday then? I've got Alaskan meeting at three, but they're over at five. Um, could we do a five thirty on the fourteenth? Is everybody available for that?
Well, the other, the other option you have, mayor, is you could actually do, you could actually do a recessed regular meeting. So if you, well, no, actually you couldn't because it's not on the agenda for this meeting. Well, I guess it is, but um. Well, you have two options. You could, you could technically, if you wanted to do on, do it on Wednesday. Um. If you wanted to do it on Wednesday and, you're you're not within the seventy two hours to call it as a special meeting. Uh, but you could just recess the regular meeting. At the end of this, instead of adjourning the regular meeting, you could just recess the regular meeting. Uh, until uh that Wednesday afternoon, if you wanted to do it then. Otherwise, if you wanted to truly set it as a special meeting. Uh, then uh you'd need to do it on Thursday.
What's, what's the council favor on this? I'm good either way.
Is it going to be a closed meeting, Chris?
Uh, no, I don't believe it'll be a closed meeting.
I'm good with Thursday.
We're talking about Mitch, that doesn't.
Yeah, and no, you you wouldn't, no, you would not be able to close it. There would not be a basis, it would have to be an open meeting.
Yeah. So I guess the question of what, what everybody council, would Wednesday night work better or Thursday?
Uh, Wednesday would work better for me after six thirty.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm good with that.
I guess Wednesday would work for me, but there is actually a couple of other things that I'd like to put on that agenda that it's probably going to take longer and I think I would. I would sooner do it. Actually, I'm I'm on the ambulance on Thursday, so Thursday wouldn't work either for me, but uh.
We couldn't do it, Dan, on Wednesday because it's any of your new issues, they're not on this agenda tonight. If I just, you know.
Yep. That's, I realize that, yeah.
Yeah. I really think we need to address this uh this week. Um. Should we just do this one week, Dan? I can always call another special meeting. You know, if we, if we got other issues.
We can do that.
Yeah, since you're on ambulance call, so. Um, Mitch, how do I, how do I call this then for Wednesday?
Yeah, so what you'll do then, uh, mayor, is when you get to item eleven on this agenda, the adjournment, instead of doing a normal adjournment, you'll just recess, the regular meeting will be recessed. Um, to take up issue, uh, I'm sorry, to take up item nine G. Um. City council, regular city council meeting will be recessed until Wednesday afternoon at whatever time. Uh, and at that time you'll take up item nine G uh from this agenda. That's all.
Okay.
So you're not adjourning, you're just recessing.
Okay. And everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just do it when I come to that then, right, Mitch?
Right, correct.
Okay, item H, approve advertising for part time position of recycle center attendant. Uh, Kenny?
Yeah, so as some of you may know, um, we, about a year ago this time, we hired a third recycle attendant. Uh. We currently had two, uh, one of the other gentlemen that worked out there just kind of fills in as like a vacation replacement, somebody sick or goes on. Whatever, out of town. Um, so we had hired a another guy, Pat Mahoney, who unfortunately. Uh, after no more than working one or two shifts, got sick and and actually is deceased. Um. So we've still been running the rest of the year with the two and one backup. Uh, now one of the two has given me notice that he's done. So we're down to really one. Regular recycle attendant and one person who really doesn't want to be. Scheduled all the time, just wants to do like the vacation replacement type of thing, so. To keep the recycle center running the way it's always has, what they do is we're open three days a week, fourteen hours a week. And they take turns working a week at a time. And they actually take care of their own schedule. Um, if somebody does want to switch a shift or something like that, they handle it all. Themselves out there. I always worked out really fine, to be honest with you. I mean, a lot of the time I just get their time cards on Monday morning and I. Never have any problems, but uh to keep it going the way it has been, we need to uh hire a replacement.
Okay, I have a motion to approve advertising for part time position recycle center attendant?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, motion by councillor Zins, support?
All support.
Support by councillor Pop, roll call?
Councillor Zins.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Reland.
Yes, motion carries. Mitch, do I need to call a motion to recess it or just I can do?
Oh, I I think, I think you can do that, mayor, so what you want to do is just say the 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 regular meeting will stand in recess until, what was, what time is you're gonna, your meeting gonna be on Wednesday?
Six, six thirty, six thirty. Um, I'm gonna put this.
So I was just gonna say the minutes can just reflect that uh you can just declare that the the meeting stands in recess until six thirty on Wednesday, at which time. You'll take up item nine G.
Okay, I'm recessing this meeting uh and we'll be reopening it at six thirty on Wednesday for item nine G. Uh, good night, everybody, and uh remember we have an EDA right away, okay?
Mm-hmm.